Madam City Clerk, can you please do roll call?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Alejandra Avila?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
He's running a little late.
Mayor Protem Daniel Damian?
Here.
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Uh, he will be absent till seven o'clock meeting, so make a motion to excuse him.
Second.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Um, do we have any speakers wishing to speak? I will now open public communication.
No.
Seeing no speakers, I will now close public communication. And the only item on our agenda tonight is the fiscal year 2022-2023 proposed budget discussion, presented by our Finance Director Rose Tam. Rose, you have the floor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members and the residents of Bowen Park. This evening, I'm going to present you the projected fiscal year 2223 budget. In this presentation, uh, I'm going to, uh, present two parts. And the first part is the, uh, proj- uh, projected budget for the general fund, uh, operation. Next page, please. Uh, this page will show you the general fund operating overview updates. And as you may see, the general fund revenue, uh, will be projected at thirty-three, six hundred forty-two and one hundred, um, thousand. And we projected about one point three eight nine million increase. The transfer in, we projected for about seven hundred eighteen thousand dollars. And with a decrease for about four hundred nine thousand dollar. And this will bring to the total projection of general fund revenue for about thirty-four point three six millions. With a total increase for about nine hundred eighty thousand dollar. And I'm going to provide everyone, uh, more detailed information regarding the revenue and also the expenditures. We projected the general fund operation expenditure for about thirty-three point nine one seven, uh, million. And with about one point two seven six million increase. And also, we have a transfer out for five hundred eighty-nine thousand and four hundred forty-five dollars with about two thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars increase. That will, uh, bring a total project it expenditure with, uh, about thirty-four point five million. And with that, and we projected with, um, about hundred forty-six thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars in, uh, deficit. Next slide, please.
Just really quick, Rose, before you go on, just for the record, wanted to, uh, uh, make sure that Councilmember Hernandez is not present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, uh, show everyone, uh, in little bit more details about the revenue projections. And as you may see in this slide, and we have projected an increase for property tax for about eight hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. And sales tax for one point three eight six million. And the utility users tax, we, uh, we projected it might, will might be the same as current fiscal year. And we projected a property tax in lieu of VLF for about two hundred thousand dollar increase. And franchise fees, uh, with about three hundred thousand dollar increase also. And fifty thousand dollar, uh, fifty thousand dollar increase in business license. And licenses and permits, we projected about ninety-one thousand dollar decrease. And fines and penalties, fifty-nine thousand dollar decrease. Use of money and property, we projected about three hundred ninety-four thousand dollar decrease. And T O, uh, TOT, we did, uh, projected about thirty thousand dollar increase. Ch- uh, charges for services, we projected about six hundred thousand dollar decrease. For all other miscellaneous revenue, we projected about two hundred seventy-four thousand dollar decrease. Um, the total projected revenue increase, uh, would be one point three eight nine million. Uh, however, with the decrease in transfer in for about four hundred nine thousand decrease, which bring a total of revenue for the next fiscal year, uh, increase for about eight, uh, nine hundred eighty thousand dollar. I'm going to show everyone, um, in little bit further details of, uh, certain revenues in this slide.
Rose?
Yes?
Excuse me, Mayor Protem, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Hernandez.
Uh, just have a couple of questions in regards to the, uh, the decreases. Can you share a little bit more in regards to why we project, uh, lower in the license permits? The, and then, uh, the money in property, and I think the last one was the charge for services?
Yes, I'm going to show everyone about, uh, all these, uh, line item in the next couple slides.
Okay, I'll hold. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide, please. Uh, I'm going to show everyone the projection for the license and permits, uh, why we projected a decrease. We projected a small decrease, uh, with about one thousand dollars in the abandonment property registration. And a small decrease for seven hundred thousand, I mean, seven hundred dollar in building permits and fees. All those projections are based on the current fiscal year's receipts. Uh, they might change it, uh, in later on. And we also projected a construction permits increase for a hundred thousand dollars. And street and curb permit, we projected ten thousand dollar increase. And that will bring the total summary of ninety-one thousand and seven hundred decrease in projection for the license and permits.
Mayor Protem, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Um, so just as I under- if I can try to understand this a little bit further. But the construction permits, are we assuming that, uh, all the current projects that are, uh, that are happening now? That we have no anticipated new construction prod- big construction projects that are coming on board within the next fiscal year?
Based on the information provided by, uh, planning and building, and we still expecting, uh, the permit fee coming in for about four hundred fifty thousand dollars. And Ron might be, uh, further, uh, explained in this area.
Yes, thank you, Rose and, uh, Councilmember Hernandez. Uh, yes, that is correct. So when we evaluate, um, projected construction permits, uh, during the fiscal year, you'll notice, uh, we notice and we account for, um, um, years that we have, um, that will have entitlements approved, and then we project in the following year, that's when we anticipate the building permit. So, um, uh, it could very well mean that in the next fiscal year, um, as we go into twenty-three, twenty-four, we could see an increase, but we, it dips and then it increases.
Ron, I have a question. Does that account for all the ADU projects that are coming online? Are we projecting? Did we include all of what we project for new ADUs?
Yes, it, um, the ADUs is, is not as significant. I don't have that, the, the data. I can get that, uh, I can get that follow-up with that information. Uh, but the ADUs anticipated, uh, last year, we did about seventy-five ADUs. Um, and so we're on, we're on schedule to get about the same, probably exceed that, uh, before the end of the year.
And the seventy-five to eighty, um, ADUs, how much revenue or how, like, what are the permit fees involved? Do you remember?
You're probably looking at, from what I remember on the presentation that we gave the council a while back, you're, you're probably looking at, uh, a couple thousand dollars in, in permit fees uh, for any, a typical ADU of like seven hundred, between seven hundred, seven hundred to, uh, a thousand square feet.
Okay, so two thousand per ADU?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, I expect that the ADUs are gonna take off. And, um, maybe, who knows, maybe we'll see an increase in the construction permits based on that.
Yes.
Thank you, Ron. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide will provide you, uh, further information about fines and penalties. Uh, fines and penalties category, including the community enhancement size, we projected for about six thousand dollar increase. And parking citations, based on what we have received so far, uh, we want to be, uh, conservative. And we projected about five thousand dollar decrease. And for truck, uh, truck parking citations, we projected for about sixty thousand dollar decrease. And for the vehicle qualify, we want to, uh, keep it the same at this time. Uh, with all this, we projected for about fifty-nine thousand dollar decrease in this category. Any questions?
Yes, Rose, I'd like to just take the opportunity right now to mention, um, that we really haven't been enforcing, it appears, a truck parking, uh, ordinances. And so if the chief is, is listening to this presentation, I'd like to point this line item out and, and show why it makes sense for us in terms of our budget, you know, to enforce that. But also, it's causing some public safety issues when, um, very large vehicles are parked on our streets and smaller vehicles are trying to make left turns and, you know, they can't see. So I just wanted to highlight this item in your presentation, Rose, to show that, you know, there has been, it looks like a, a decrease significant, so that tells me we're not really enforcing that. And we should be, not only for budget purposes, but also for public safety purposes.
Yes, I totally agree with you, Councilwoman Monica. And we will continue, uh, working with the police department and monitoring, uh, in this area.
Great, thank you, Rose.
Any questions? If no, we go to next slide, or, or Police Chief can chime in.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Council, uh, Councilmember, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. As, as in regard to the parking citations, if you recall that we only had one parking, uh, officer, parking enforcement officer. Now we, uh, through the, uh, approval of the council, we have three. Uh, two, one's in training, but two are, have been added to the staff. So I'm hoping that that should help us to generate, uh, the concerns of, uh, truck parking and, uh, vehicle fines as well. And the parking citations.
Great, thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Rose, we can, we can move along. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide will show you, uh, some more breakdown, uh, for the category of, uh, use of money and property. And this would include the fa- uh, facility rental. We projected for about fifty thousand dollar increase in the rental. And we will remain the similar projection for interest income and loan interest. And also for the sale of property, the reason we have four hundred ninety-five thousand dollar decrease because in the prior year, we have, uh, we had a one-time sale of property. And we are not going to expect that happen again in the next fiscal year. And we expected to have fifty dot one thousand dollar increase in the sponsorships and donations, uh, from the, uh, street markets event. Any questions on this slide? If no, we can go to the next slide.
Rose, or perhaps Manny, just for, for everyone's clarification, does that include the holiday, um, clothing drive that we receive, uh, funding for?
The holiday, when you say holiday drive?
Santa Claus.
Oh, Santa Claus, uh, no, it's not.
That we do at, at Walmart.
It's not included here.
But what's the?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, the Santa Claus program is traditionally incorporated into our five oh one C three number, our, our account. Uh, so I don't believe it is incorporated into the city's budget unless Rose could expand on that a little bit more.
Uh, no, the five oh one is a trust account. It's not included here in the general fund projection.
Okay, so this is just strictly from the, uh, the vendors that we do for all the various, uh, street fair and the concert and the parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. So this slide will give you more information on the category of charges for services. And we remain the same for the admin fee for the PC loan program. And also, we are going to expect, uh, some administrative fees for, um, about sixty thousand dollar with an increase of forty-five thousand dollar. Uh, we are going to expect a decrease in the background checks. And in the past, uh, the, um, may coming in revenue for background checks because we started the, uh, cannabis, uh, program in the city. We also expected, uh, for about thirty-nine thousand dollar increase in the billboard revenue. And we expected about fifty thousand dollar decrease in the building plan check fee. And the cannabis safety fees, uh, we won't expect it, we are going to, uh, receive that anymore. And also, we are going to, uh, see decrease for about fifty-five thousand dollars for the design review fees. And engineering fees, we expected about ten thousand dollar increase. And for the jail fee revenue, we expected with a sixty-eight thousand dollar increase. Uh, this will conclude the charges for services. Uh, any questions?
Yes, if I could have the chief speak to the jail fee revenue, um, and if that's a new program or what we're enhancing around that, please. Jail fee revenue, we went from twen- two thousand to seven, seventy thousand.
Correct, we have the pay-to-stay, that has been proving to be very successful. Uh, we have some, uh, folks even from the out-of-state, who are paying to stay at the, at our jail.
Okay, is that something that we could perhaps increase? Cause it's, that, that is, sounds like a little comfort, um, for some of those folks. I don't know if there's a market rate that we're basing that on or, or what, how we, how we tie those rates to?
It is a court rate, so, so it's, it's based on the court fees and, and what they have to pay for the courts.
Perfect. And is that, uh, based on your assumption here, is that, uh, they, uh, hard to assume this, but, um, is that like twenty percent of the time that we'll have folks from out-of-state or u- utilizing our jails? Or is that three percent or five percent of, of the space that we have throughout the year? Or how do we, what does that account for?
It's, it's har- I, I can't, don't have that figure, but I can get it for you, but we do, we're constantly busy. So, uh, we've got people, I believe, if I'm mistaken, we have people that are, that are staying for the year.
Oh, wow.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, welcome to California.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next slide, please. This slide, uh, continues showing the charges for services. And we expecting, uh, ten thousand dollar increase from, from the plan check fee, six thousand dollar from the police overtime reimbursement. And also a decrease for the pavement, uh, restoration fees. And we also projected a twenty thousand dollar decrease in rent, uh, stabilization program admin fee. And we expected to have an increase of five thousand dollar in the residential redevelopment tax. And also the zoning fee, we projected a small decrease for one thousand three hundred dollars. And this bring a total decrease of, uh, six hundred thousand dollars in this category. Uh, if no questions, we can go to the next slide. Uh, this slide, I want to provide you a little bit more information on the miscellaneous revenue. Um, the reason you see, uh, increase or revenue coming in from the crossing guard program. We projected the crossing guard program will cost about two hundred ninety thousand dollars next year. Uh, we, uh, working with the school district, the school district agreed to pay half of the cost. Uh, that's why we have fifty percent of the revenue coming in to cover half of the cost for the crossing guard program. And again, uh, here you see about four hundred ninety thousand dollar decrease because also in the previous year, we have a one-time property sale. And for the SB two-one-one pass-through, we are going to expect about twenty-six thousand dollar increase. And we also expect to have about forty thousand dollar increase in the vehicle license fees. And this will conclude the miscellaneous revenue category. Any questions? If no question, we go to the next slide. Uh, I want to provide everybody, uh, some information about the transfer in. We projected we are going to receive, uh, the public benefit fees from the cannabis for about one point four million. And to be, uh, conservative, and we are going to just utilize about seven hundred eighteen thousand dollars. A total of about seventy-five percent of the total projected revenue. And as you may see, we allocate them to the police and also youth service and community and, uh, related legal fees. And also, we allocate, uh, small portion to community enhancement and community development and zoning. And we also allocate some portion to, uh, fund the administration and finance, uh, costs. And we also allocate some portion to fund the, uh, landscaping, park maintenance and summer lunch program. And with that, uh, we have about three hundred fifty thousand dollar, uh, remaining in the public benefit fees from the cannabis program. Any questions?
I have a question, Rose. So, in this particular case, you're indicating that we're projected to receive one point four million dollars from the cannabis permits?
Yes.
And is that pretty accurate to what we're expecting to receive from any, uh, agreements that we have in place? Or how are we projecting this?
Uh, we projected this, uh, by working, uh, with planning Ron and our cannabis, uh, legal counsel. Uh, we went through all the, uh, existing cannabis, uh, business and the future coming in business. And based on those projection, we, uh, came up with a very conservative amount of one point four million.
Got it. So this is something that we currently have in the pipeline?
Uh, yes, uh, the list has been, um, provided to City Council and, and has been discussed, uh, before.
Perfect.
We can send the detailed list of all those firms to the City Council after this, uh, meeting to provide you, uh, the list of the cannabis firm and how much we expected to receive from each firm.
Okay, and then, Ron, um, this would be basically something that we're basing off of the new agreements, correct? The new fee structure that you've put on?
Yes, and, and further, I'm working with the Finance Director and our, our Special Counsel on the cannabis. As, as, uh, the Finance Director mentioned, it is a conservative estimate, and we want to make sure that we're not over-promising. Uh, but our goal is to obtain, um, uh, as, as much as possible, uh, during this time. So we projected just recently with it, the, uh, approval of EAS um, and several others that are on par to, uh, open up, uh, within the fiscal year. Um, so this, this number could very well, uh, mean that it could increase, um, as we go through, through the year.
Thank you, thank you both.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Avila.
Thank you. Rose, the total projected transfer to other funds, what do you mean by other funds? Do you have an idea what other funds that would be transferred to?
Uh, yes, uh, as you may see, I listed all the breakdown for all other funds, uh, which including the trees and landscaping funds and parks maintenance fund, prop A park funds and summer lunch funds. And with that, the total, uh, funded, I mean, the total, uh, fund to all those other funds program is about three hundred thirty-one thousand and three hundred seventy-five dollars.
Okay, I had not done the math. I thought there was an additional three thirty-one for other funds, but I see now you're adding all these numbers together.
Thank you. So with the seven hundred eighty thousand dollar and plus the, uh, funding to- So with the $780,000 and plus the funding to other funds area with $331,000 and plus the remaining set aside for $350,000, it will total up to 1.4 million estimated revenue coming in. Any other questions? Next slide, please.
Rose, just as a point of added clarification, as Ron indicated, that this best projection is estimated based on the last discussion we had with the city council on the fee structure, which as of now, may, does not include the potential distribution add-on if the council were to instruct us to have a distribution specific add-on. Or right now, I think we, self-service is not included? Or a distribution fee?
Correct, right now, that fee has not been confirmed.
Right, so if the council were to direct us to still charge that, then this could go up.
Correct, yes, thank you for that.
This slide will show you the revenue projection in a pie chart. And as you may see, the property tax, VRF, and sales tax are big portion of the total general fund revenue. Next slide, please. This slide will show you the percentage of each category from the general fund revenue projections. Thank you. Next, please. Now I'm going to present you the projected general fund operation expenditure by category. And as you may see, we have about $842,658,000 increase. This increase mainly from the recent past MOU and COLA adjustment, 3% of COLA adjustment. And we also have about $286,000 increase in maintenance and operations. We have about $462,000 decrease in internal charges. And we also have about $597,000 increase in contractual services and about $12,000 increase in capital category. And this would bring us to a total projection of 1.276 million increase in the general fund expenditures. We also have a small increase of $2,500 from the transfer out. And I will show everyone in further details of all those increase and decreases. Next slide, please. The transfer out of $589,000 is to pay the COP lease payments, which is the bond that we issue to fund the construction of the community center. And we would, we are going to pay off the bond in 2034. Next, please. And I think we skipped some slides. Let's see, this is page 15. Page 12. Can we go to page 17, please? Okay, this slide will show you the general fund expenditure by department. And we have administration, community development, finance, police, public works, recreation, and non-departmental. And we show about total of 1.278 million increase. I'm going to show you in further details for each department's increase and/or decreases. Next slide, please. And David, I'm sorry, please go to slide number 20. Okay, this slide will show you the details of increase or decrease by administration department. And also, all the departments, department heads are here can further to answer any question you may have. And the very first slide item is the personnel cost for the administration. You see about $29,000 decrease in this slide item, mainly is from the savings from the current frozen HR technician position and less the cost of hiring a part-time staff person. And we also have the POB contribution, and which is the bond that we issued in 2019 to, for the, I mean, for the unfunded liability of 54 million, which I'm going to talk about it further and which lead us to the CalPERS cost. Everyone knows that CalPERS costs continue to increase dramatically. And for the coming fiscal year 2023, for example, for the safety is going to be 23.75%. And for the miscellaneous, it's about 11.88%. And daily, I'm very thankful, and I want to thank for the city council's support back from 2019 and to support us to refund the unfunded liability from CalPERS. If we have not done that, and today, you would expect it to pay at least over $6 million to CalPERS just for the unfunded liability portion. Because we refunded the unfunded liability from CalPERS, and currently, we are paying 3.75% interest comparing to 23-some percent. And over the next 30 years, we are going to have a long-term saving for about $23 to $25 million savings. For example, for the next coming fiscal year, we save about $2 million in the unfunded liability payment. Otherwise, you are going to see about $6 million just added to this budget to pay CalPERS for the outstanding unfunded liability. So luckily, you see the city, now we only have a very small increase in the CalPERS cost.
Rose, if I could just kind of put that more in layman's terms for my own understanding and, you know, also for a little bit of information and background for my colleagues, especially those who are new. The unfunded liability is basically the carrying cost to the city for CalPERS' benefits to our employees, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so when you say that 23%, the city will pay 23% to CalPERS. So that means that, let's say we look at one employee and we look at their salary, their benefits, is it 23% of that total package that the city pays?
Yes, this percentage is for the safety sworn officers. And for miscellaneous non-sworn employees, the city has to contribute 11.88%. And they are going to have increase or maybe, most likely not, decrease from CalPERS. It depends on the investment and return, I mean, investment return from CalPERS.
Okay, thank you for sharing that because I think as we look at, you know, any changes to personnel in terms of salaries and benefits moving forward, we want to keep in mind that it's not just the salary or the benefits, but it's also this additional percentage that we pay to CalPERS. And so, you know, in the future, when we are considering any increases and things like that, please remind us of this cost because I think it's important to take into consideration just, you know, overall.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Monica, for mentioning that. And I also would like to provide a future projection for CalPERS. For example, for 22, 23, for the safety, we are going to have to pay for the unfunded liability for $455,000. And with the projection from CalPERS, within the next couple of years, it will go up to 1 million. It goes up very fast. Each year, it will increase for about $200,000 to $300,000 just for the safety portion.
So Rose, definitely when we are, you know, taking the, any increases up in the future, please remind us of this.
Thank you. I believe that's very important to point this out. And now we go to, if no further question on the CalPERS matter, and I'm going to moving along to other line items. So the next slide item, oh, no, David, please go back to, yes. So the next slide item is for the meetings and conference. In the past couple of years, because of COVID and lots of department haven't sent staff to a conference. And with the coming year, you will see some increases in meetings and conference. And for example, in this slide item, we have about $30,000 increase in the conference and meetings. And I have the detailed information on the justification column. And I'm not going to read all of them line by line unless you have any questions, Ben. Feel free to stop me anytime.
I do, I do have a question, Rose. Do we, do we traditionally, I mean, obviously, I really don't know because I've been on the council since COVID, but do we traditionally, as council members, spend $5,000 a year attending meetings and conferences? Do you know?
In the past, I see about $2,000 or $3,000. It depends on how many conference that the city councils are going to attend.
Okay, so this can always decrease further?
We can always make adjustment during the mid-year budget.
Perfect, thank you, Rose.
You are very welcome. So the next one, you will see education and training. We have about $15,000 increase and proposed by the HR managers. And she encourage for the citywide training for many programs. And then the next, you will see publication, subscription, and deals. And we have about $9,800 increase. And you will see the detailed justification on the far right-hand side column. And also you see a $23,000 increase. And that's for the internal service fund, for the IT, to fund IT-related costs and also to fund the citywide insurance and to fund the free services. With the free services, not necessarily every department have that cost. It depends how many cars or if the department use any city cars. And now we have the consultant services. And you see about $200,021 increase here. The major increase for this slide item due to the election year coming up, we estimated about $200,000 for the election-related costs. And then we also have about $21,000 increase for recruitment and background checks. The next item is for the professional services. And you see about $77,000 increase. And in this slide item, there is $50,000 increase for additional professional services. And then also about $20,000 for the city council meeting translation cost. And then we also have about $7,000 miscellaneous costs for anything related to recruitment. And then, at the last slide item, I don't break them down for anything, any line item under $5,000. But all the line item detailed information will be provided once we adopted the budget. And all detail line item, every single line item, include all line items under $5,000 will be posted on the city's website. Besides, I will provide the budget book to all the city council and department heads.
Rose, going back to the professional services, additional professional services for $50,000, can you give us an example of what type of additional professional services we are talking about?
I will have Irigi to further explain to you in this area because this item is requested by the administration office.
So this is actually a reduction, see, it's how we frame it, right, Rose?
Yes.
You guys, you may recall that we had had a request for staff augmentation services, which, you know, we wanted for sure to bring on some help quickly given the staffing pinch that we found ourselves in. And so I ended up bringing one person to help out on a part-time basis. We were not able to sustain the person on a part-time basis, so we parted ways, which instead of having 200,000 that we would have had for that sort of consultant services. it now has been reduced to 50,000. And it may not even account for 50,000. And if there's other consultant services that become necessary, associated with some of the new programs we're doing, for example, we have a, an agenda management software that will be brought on board. If we need technical support beyond what comes with the package initially, then this will be used for that.
Thank you, Irike.
Thank you. I want to comment on this a little bit, Irike. The reason you see increase there, because when we prepare the budget, we always use the new number compared to the original adopted budget from the beginning of the current fiscal year. Thank you. Any more question on the administration slide?
Rose, I have questions on the consultant services because I see that that went
Yes.
6,000 to 21,000. So can you break that down for us a little bit more?
That number is provided by the HR division. And mainly, that number, I believe, is, they use that number based on the current recruitment and the future expected recruitment activities they are going to have, correct, Laura?
And Rose, while we wait for Laura to respond, is the $200,000 figure for the election cost or estimated election cost, does that include all of the ballot initiatives?
Lulu is going to provide you a further response in this area.
Thank you, Rose. Yes, Councilmember Garcia, that does include the initiatives. This also includes, so when we do to the initiatives, we also have to pay the county for signature verification and that number is included as well.
Okay, so let's say there was one initiative or there are five initiatives, then our costs will stay the same.
Well, the initiatives that are currently ongoing are three initiatives that I have now, and that is included in this cost. And I have also included an estimate of about six ballot measures to be added to this election, and that cost is also covered.
Okay, as part of the 200,000, okay, okay, thank you, that was my question. So I'm okay with, with the response, Rose, we can move along.
Rose, I was going to suggest Mayor Protem, just a time check, because I know we have a sort of a side package of potential personnel staffing-related request for discussion, that I was hoping we would take the second hour for that. But you know, just if you look at what still lies ahead, Rose, before we're able to get to the, that sort of parking lot of ideas, just do a time check because at seven is when the next session begins.
Okay, thank you. I will try to go a little bit faster. Thank you for the reminder. Next slide, please. And this slide shows you the breakdown of the Community Development Department. You can see increase in personnel costs, as I mentioned earlier, that's due to the MOU and COLA adjustment. And the CalPERS increase, you will see it would happen to almost to every department. And also, the Internal Service for Information Insurance Free is going to allocate it to each department. And based on the total personnel they have and the cost they have. And also, they have increased for $6,000 for the conference that they, they plan to have staff to attend. And also, $6,000 increase for the training. And also, the professional services increase for $6,500. And also miscellaneous items that are under $5,000. And if nobody have any questions, then I'm going to move to the next slide. Anybody have question on this slide? Next slide, please. This slide is for the Finance Department. And it's same, the increase is for the personnel cost is for the MOU and COLA and the POB and the CalPERS Internal Service Fund. And the main increase you may see here for the professional services is about $8,700. That's for the annual Citywide Audit. And then we have about $5,000 for all other miscellaneous items that are under $5,000. Any questions on this slide? If no, we move to the next one. This slide is for the Police Department. And as you may see, Police Department has outlawed more staffs in their department. And you see the increase, same for the MOU and COLA. And then we have a small decrease in the POB contribution because the POB bonds each year, the payment is going down a little bit each year. And you see a kind of big increase in CalPERS for $313,000. And as I explained earlier, what causing this increase? Then you also see maintenance and, I mean, material and supplies and education, training increase, utility. And also, you see all the allocation to the Internal Service Fund. There is some increase or decrease here and depends on all the allocations related to personnel and the free. And also, you see consultant services increase for $112,000. And with the justification you see on the right-hand side column. And then we have a small miscellaneous items under $5,000 increase for about $3,400. Any questions on this slide?
Chief, if you don't mind, I'm very excited that you guys, for the supplies and materials that you're actually, you know, have some real funding in there to, instead of having police officers go and knock and ask for services from our community, which I'm sure they, they're always willing to support. It's just good to be able to have that funds, something that we've been advocating for quite some time. In regards to the Emergency Operation Coordinator, is that a part-time or a full-time position?
That's a part-time position.
And is the Emergency Operation Coordinator, are they going to be a certified emergency manager?
Yes, sir.
Next slide, please. This slide is for Public Works. As we have mentioned before in the past, and Public Works, most of the expenditures are funded with special revenue funds. And that's why you see a few items here only. And we also have the increase in personnel costs with the COLA adjustment and $14,000 increase to cover different programs, such as the Downtown Street Market, Pride of the Valley, Fourth of July, Celebrate Bowen Park and such. And then you see a smaller decrease in some of the miscellaneous items. Any questions? If no, we go to the next slide. This slide is for Recreation and Community Services. And they also have increase in personnel costs and POB, CalPERS. And they have $16,300 increase in meetings and conference. And they also have increase of $23,000 in material supplies and increase in minor equipment purchase and rental equipment. And also, maintenance and repair and internal service charge. And also consultant services. And also, increase in professional services. And we have the justification for all these increases on the right-hand side column.
I just have a really quick question, I don't want to take too much time. On the consultant services, there's an increase of 105,500. It's for Downtown Street Market, 60,000, and Summer Concert at the Park for $45.5,000. Are we paying a consulting service for these events? Or what are the, what consultant services are we covering for this?
Hi, Manny, you might be able to give more detailed information. I think
Absolutely.
Yeah, they cover those bands and
Yes, great question, Mayor Protem, Damian. Those consultant services are primarily for the stage, the setup, teardown, lighting system and our sound system. We are bringing in more elaborate, next-level type of musical groups. So with that comes next level, more elaborate sound systems. Thank you.
Got it, so it's more of like a, kind of like a contractual type of service, okay, perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any more questions? If no, we move to the last slide for the expenditure. This slide covers non-departmental expenditures from General Fund. And as you may see, in this slide, we have a consultant services increase, which is the $40,000 for the grant writing services and also $9,000 for the sales tax ballot measure. And we have an increase in the Retiree Health Insurance for about $44,000. And you may see 1.12, 1.112 million decrease in this line item because we don't want to put anything here until we finish the annual audit, which we are in the final stage of completing the annual audit from 2021. And we expect it to have a similar contribution to the CalPERS trust account once the audit is completed. Any questions on this slide? And if not, this would complete the General Fund expenditure projections. Next slide, please.
Rose, as you're doing that, could you tell me where we can find the expenditure cost for our cannabis attorney?
The expenditure for our cannabis attorney?
Correct.
And I can tell you as of today, current fiscal year, what we have spent. Do you want me to tell you what we have spent as of today?
I'd like to know what we're budgeting for, for next year, because I didn't see that in our, in the budget package.
Oh, we budgeted for, based on what we have spent so far in current fiscal year, we budgeted for about $154,000. That's included in the transfer in contribution we talked earlier.
Perfect, and how much have we spent?
When we discuss about the estimated projected cannabis revenue.
Okay, and how much have we spent? You said you had the number of how much we spent for that person now?
The current fiscal year,
Correct.
we have spent about $166,000.
Perfect, thank you.
You're very welcome.
How much was that?
For about $166,000.
And this is only for the cannabis attorney?
Yes. And I believe this expenditure only cover up to probably March or April.
Okay, thank you, Rose.
You're very welcome.
Rose, can you go back to the last slide?
Yes.
So the General Fund expenditures by department, and then we end up with nearly $1 million of a decrease. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Yes, the main decrease in this category or this non-departmental and because, and you, as you may see, in current fiscal year, we have 1.1 million dollars for the OPAT Trust. And we passed this ordinance and resolution a few years ago. Each fiscal year, if we, once we complete the Citywide Audit, if we have surplus, 50% will go to the CalPERS trust fund. So the reason we see a decrease and we don't want to put in the budget yet because we are in the final stage to complete the fiscal year 2021 audit. And once we completed the audit and we will put that in the mid-year budget, we projected that we are going to have a surplus from fiscal year ending June 30, 2021.
So you think that there will still be a surplus in this?
In 2021.
Okay, I think what I'll do is I'll follow up with you separately to understand this a little bit more. I just wanted, because I saw that we went from the 1.1 million to not accounting for anything, and I heard your explanation, but I was curious to know realistically, you know, what that might look like and if it would impact the next slide, which is our overall, I guess, deficit. Will it impact this deficit or will it give us a surplus?
It won't, it won't impact the deficit or surplus because that would be from the surplus, if any. We only contribute and send the money to CalPERS trust account for the rainy day if we only see surplus from the prior year. We won't contribute any money and if we don't have surplus, that's the reason it's not going to impact the surplus or deficit on this slide.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. So this will bring us with the summary of the General Fund projection. And this is the bar chart to show the General Fund reserve balance. If no question, we
Really quick, Rose, really quick?
Yes.
I just saw that from, we were kind of like increasing basically 2017. I mean, there has been a substantial increase across all these bars. But 2017 to 2022, there was an increase every year. And then in the projected year, there's less. Can you tell me why?
Uh the reason we have a stable uh increase, um especially from twenty-one, twenty-two. Prior to twenty twenty-one, uh when we were expecting a COVID. Uh uh going to impact the economy and everyone, we took a proactive uh planning. And we were uh projected all the incoming revenue uh very conservatively. Uh fortunately, uh this city uh does not have lots of tourist uh revenue. Uh however, we receive a unexpected increase in the sales tax. That's why uh we see a big jump in uh these two years. Uh at the same time, we took a a cut, a conservative cut. Uh in these two fiscal year. So with the increase in sales tax and the conservative saving and cut in the overall budget. And that's why we see a increase over law in our uh general fund reserve. And the reason you see a small dip in the coming fiscal year. As you uh may see the projection I just presented. We expected about hundred forty-six thousand dollar uh deficit. That's why you see a small dip there in the general fund reserve.
Is it because we're using the general fund reserve to balance the budget?
Uh when you have deficit, anytime you have deficit in the general fund. It uh difference has to come from the reserve.
So it looks like for the first year, over several years, we're tapping into our savings. To pay for our operational expenses.
Uh actually, uh yes, when you see the dip in two thousand fourteen. Uh or sixteen or seventeen.
Well, I want to highlight that for my colleagues because, you know, um we see it here, two thousand seventeen. Through two thousand twenty-two, there is an increase in our savings. And then, you know, this projected year, we're going to be tapping into our savings to cover our costs. And um I'm glad we're taking the time. I mean, this is the time to review our projected budget. So that we can keep this in mind and we can also make adjustments as needed. Um or collect revenues wherever we can, especially in the cannabis industry. So that, you know, we don't have to tap into our savings. Um but I just wanted to understand that. And then highlight it because I think we need to be a little bit more careful this year. And this fiscal year is July first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thou- two thousand twenty-three. So um, you know, again, for the first year in many years. Um we're we're taking this approach and I I want to kind of caution that we not um become too, you know, comfortable in where we sit. Because anytime we have to tap into our savings to pay for operational costs, uh we need to reevaluate or we need to, you know, think about what else we can bring in. Um just like any one of us, you know, and we have to look at additional sources of income. And um and then in in that same vein, uh we also want to be careful about how money is being expended. Or any expenditures. And again, it brings brings me back to why it's important for this legislative body as a whole to be reviewing uh budget priorities. And how resources are being allocated within this organization and in the across the community. Um so I just want to take the opportunity to do that as well, to make that statement. Um and then I also want to say that in past years, we have taken a full study session to review the budget. So that we can ask questions and um, you know, fully understand. So I I really want to thank you all for, you know, giving us the space to to do that and giving us the opportunity to ask questions because it is important. And we'd rather take the time now than mid-year. Um, you know, have to take kind of drastic measures, um because things, things weren't going to, you know, according to plan. So now is the time. Thank you, Rose. And thank you to staff for everything that you did to contribute to this. Because it's very well um itemized and presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Monica. Uh for emphasizing about the savings, as I mentioned earlier. And we have no control over CalPERS. And we will, we would continue seeing increases from CalPERS. Thank you again. So uh next, I'm going to present the uh department's uh requests. Which are not included in this uh budget projection.
Rose, uh one quick, uh one, just one quick question on this proposed budget that we just went through. Um I know you're going to present the department requests for uh personnel and reclassifications. Um in this presentation, did it include any, obviously, the expenses that includes all of the legal fees that we that we've paid, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then one thing that I did notice was the uh compaction study that was addressed. Uh that actually was not addressed with this budget. I know that we gave direction a couple of meetings ago. Uh for full-time and part-time staff uh to restructure. Uh we got no cost estimates on that. We got, this was not addressed in this budget. And we know that we made it a priority to make sure that we addressed it in this budget. Why wasn't this addressed on this budget, but yet we have a stack of new personnel requests and reclassifications?
Uh actually, we have improvement uh partial of that. All the part-timers, uh now their minimum wages are uh I mean, have been adjusted to sixteen dollars and eighty-two cents. Uh which is uh higher than the uh California minimum uh wages.
Yeah, but that was, that was something totally different. That was something that we proposed so that we had enough people applying. So that we were able to have the street market, the summer concerts at the park, because we had no staff. And that was a totally separate issue that we had done immediate so that we had the manpower to be able to work these events coming the summer. But then we remember we had a compaction issue. And this was something that was directed by the council a couple of meetings ago to please address it within this fiscal year's budget. So I I don't see any of that unless I'm missing something. I don't see it here.
Mayor Protem Damian, uh yes, you're right. It it's not included. Uh so the way we approached coming into the study session was first is uh providing the roll-up of what the projected twenty-two, twenty-three budget would be with just the the bare minimum, meaning all the things that need to be accounted for that have transpired over the course of the current fiscal year. You mentioned, for example, the legal cost. Well, that i- in the twenty-two, twenty-three, it includes the the run-up of the increase in legal cost uh as a bare minimum. For regards to salaries or any new request of positions, those are being set aside, including a pending, as you pointed out, discussion on how we're going to deal with salary adjustments. With priority to the entry-level uh position. That is a pending uh still outstanding discussion. We did not include it in the proposed budget. As you saw, we are at a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar deficit. Just with the minimum roll-up. But we can quickly, uh if that is the the inclination right now of the council for the upcoming next meeting, which is when you are going to actually approve uh a final proposed budget that will then become the adopted budget. We can definitely include anything that comes out of today's meeting, including the adjustments to the entry-level salaries of the specific entry-level positions, including the part-timers.
Yeah, absolutely, because we want to see, we want to see those numbers. Because just like we have this, uh you know, the these spreadsheet here with the position request. We have the salaries, we have the estimated benefits and the estimated total cost. We had requested for us to to have this provided for us. So that we knew what numbers we're talking about. Because here we are with, you know, a hundred and forty-six thousand dollar deficit, not including these uh, you know, personnel requests. And then we don't even know what ballpark figure we're talking about when it comes to the uh compaction studies. So uh that's, that's the reason why we requested this a couple of meetings ago, so that we had a an estimated uh figure of what it would cost.
Yes, we apologize for that, uh Mayor Protem Damian. We'll definitely have it for the the next council meeting.
Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead, Rose.
Okay. Uh may I have the slide up? Okay, uh. Hi David, could you please go to the very first slide? I want to start with the police request first. Uh since uh safety is the priority of the uh city. So this is the request from the police department. And they requested uh to unfreeze seven police officers. And to start at step one. And I listed the cost for each uh police officer. And with unfreezing the seven police officer, the total estimate cost uh would be one point two million. And also, uh there is a request to uh add four community service officers. Uh to the department. The total estimate cost would be about three hundred ninety thousand dollars. Uh however, uh I want to um mention something uh about the unfreeze the police officers. If the disinformation might help the city council and the police department to uh make a better decision at this time. And we can always uh pass this or or make adjustment and make recommendation later during the mid-year and see how things going. And currently, uh we have seventy-eight police officer position in the budget. And with seven of them uh frozen. And it bring us a seventy-one uh authori- I mean, adaptive position. And currently, based on the information provided by the police department. They have fifty-six field position for the police officers. Which means they are still going to fill another fifteen positions. And that's a a side information for uh the city council. Uh when you uh make a decision to uh direct the staff or which one you want to move ahead and let us to add it to the current uh budget, or you decided to hold on to them until um mid-year.
Rose, I have a question. Um so what we're looking at, would this be in addition to the budget we just reviewed?
That's the uh position that the police department uh requested for the coming fiscal year.
Right. But what I'm asking is, we just reviewed a budget, the proposed budget.
Yes.
Coming fiscal year.
Yes.
So now that we're reviewing these, you know, requests, are they already part of the proposed budget? Or would they be in addition to?
In addition, uh what I, uh this is the second part. These are all the requests from uh different departments. And if we pass or approve any of these requests. Will be in addition to the uh budget I just presented. For example, if we want to say we are going to unfreeze one police officers instead of seven. And we are going to add about hundred seventy-seven five thousand dollar to the uh budget I just presented to you, uh which means the deficit will go up to uh three hundred, over three hundred thousand dollar. So if we want to unfreeze all the police officers, uh the the deficit will be uh one point three million.
So I guess to my colleagues, basically what it is, is the the budget presentation that we just heard. We're we're basically facing a deficit of a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. All of these uh per- personnel requests would be in addition. So it would be basically, do we go with them now? Or do we kind of pick and choose what we want to pass, what we don't? Um so that's kind of the position that we're going to be in. Basically, it's, it's going to be up to us to decide if we proceed with all personnel requests and reclassifications. Or if we pick and choose what we want and what we don't want, whatever it is that we do choose, it's going to be added to the deficit of a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
Um ma'am?
Go ahead, Councilmember Robila.
So I completely understand. We're already in a deficit. And anything presenting presented forward will just increase our deficit. And at this time, we really don't know, for example, what our cannabis is going to look like. We have an estimated amount of what we're going to be getting from cannabis or any other sources that that Rose just presented. And I'm a little concerned about increasing that deficit at this given moment and just continue to add. And I understand that we need more police, police officers, more services. We haven't even seen the rest of the presentation and the request. It's just very concerning. I do want to see what the requests are. But it's concerning that anything that we add will just increase our deficit. That is my comment for now. I I I am interested to see what is being asked though.
Mayor Protem, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. No, I appreciate uh the regards for the uh the deficit that we're currently looking at at a hundred forty thousand. Um what I also believe is that we can certainly find the necessary funds. Uh and more importantly, I also believe that our departments can find those necessary funds for us um to help cover some of these costs. Uh my recommendation at this point would be to uh unfreeze and to add two of the service. Uh if this is what the chief uh wants in priority, I would ask that we this uh discuss uh having the uh community service officer. And have them these to, the ones that are going to be doing this, the service of non-emergency calls. Uh I'm asking for these two positions because these are the individuals that are going to be out in the field dealing with the non- non uh nine-one-one calls and the other calls that are always backed up within our police officers. We have, we as 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 council members and uh mayors, we we receive the calls and we understand with our constituents that say that the police never arrives on time. That's because first and foremost, they're being caught up with all these other uh calls that are what I would consider them non-priority. Um and they just get stacked up throughout the night and throughout the days. Those include uh loud noise, parties, uh you know, neighbor disputes. Whatever the case may be. Not necessarily where we need a sworn officer with a police gun. But we can certainly have a trained civilian uh that can go do some of that work and alleviate some of those calls. And provide an enhanced service uh for our community. Um what I would then s- suggest is that we look at perhaps doing the unfreeze of the police officers, the additional seven ones. In Ju- in perhaps, you know, during our mid-year budget, uh once the chief has a better grasp of, you know, the fifteen folks that he's bringing on board. Because my other concern is, is the, not only the overtime, but also the amount of hours that each of our police officers are being spent uh currently working and on being, and more importantly, being requested to stay over their shifts, um because they become longer and longer. So we need to be careful and mindful of that because um this is one of those few departments that is actually uh going through some of that challenges. Unlike our other departments. Um so that's what I would suggest is, yes. So that's what I would suggest is, yes, we can certainly find the two hundred thousand dollars. I certainly believe that, you know, within the cannabis money that we've talked about as the CEO, general manager has mentioned, that I believe that there's close to at least three hundred thousand money that we have not earmarked just yet that could help offset the cost for these two positions plus the hundred forty-seven thousand and change that we have in a current deficit. And more additionally, if we need to, we could ask the departments to go back to reduce their cost by at least ten percent to help offset some of the costs that we're looking at doing. So those are some of my suggestions and love to hear your feedback from my colleagues.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Avila.
I would just like to see the rest of the request to see what everybody's requesting before we make decisions. I agree that the police department does need a lot of more personnel out there. They are putting in a lot of overtime hours. I just spoke to two officers yesterday that have been on clock since the previous night and it was already noon. I do agree with that, but before we make a decision, I would like to see what the other departments are requesting.
Mayor Protemp?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. I think I agree with you, Councilmember Avila. I'd like to go through and understand what's the wish list for each department. This way, we're aware. But I'm not ready to make any decisions at this point in time. Could we bring back the discussion on any cannabis monies that are left on the table and include that in at least, maybe if not formally in the proposed budget, but it would be, we would have some idea of what is still outstanding, what's on the table that hasn't been accounted for in the proposed budget? And then that would give me some better comfort on making the additions. Like what Councilmember Hernandez mentioned with the two police officers. So I think I'd like to understand if there's any money still left on the table that we can capture. And then, if there is, then what are the actions that we take to do that? If there isn't, then, you know, where do we tighten up the belt in other areas so that we can really set the priorities more carefully, strategically? But I don't know if I'm ready to just jump in right now and add because I think what I would, in addition to that, I'd like to be briefed by our chief and, once again, looking at how many positions are active, how many have been frozen, you know, just to get a better overall. I don't want to take it piece by piece, I think. I want to fully understand what are the staffing levels exactly at the police department and just be a lot more thoughtful about how we add, you know, some of these items from the wish lists.
I agree with you, Councilmember Garcia. I think that we're pressed for time. We have about fifteen minutes before we start regular council meeting and we're not going to get through everyone's wish list from here. And we're also still missing the numbers for the request that we had on the compaction study. So I think it would be best if we brought this back, probably just focused a study session just on the personnel request. Actually, this was something that we requested last year when we had a couple of reclassifications and personnel requests. We did request for them to come back to us with justifications as to why we needed these personnel requests and these reclassifications. And here we are addressing it at the budget presentation. So I think that it would be wise for us to see what other funding sources we have available. And then this way, we can go ahead and go on like Councilmember Hernandez just mentioned. You know, the total cost for two CSOs to handle non-emergency costs is roughly about a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. And this way, we're going to have to pretty much pick and choose which positions are more critical that we absolutely need and then address, okay, well, where can we get the funding to cover for these? And then go from there. But I think that since we're about fifteen minutes away, I don't think we're going to have enough time to address all of this.
I would like to bring it back as well. It's a good idea.
If I may, Mayor Protemp Damian, let me present my suggestion because, one, you write the time consideration for today. Then the next time that we bring this up, whether it's at the next council meeting or a special meeting or a study session, to the extent that the requests by the departments, they're not so much their wish list. This is really their minimum top priority. Very, very basic top priority. But the way we would like to frame what we had brought forth, not as a recommendation, but for something for you to consider as if you would in a, the way, the best way that I can frame it is as if we had a car dealership and here's all these seven requests, think of them as cars. They sit in the lot and only when we are able to afford it can we then buy the car and drive it off the lot. So those can be trigger instructions that you give us over the course of the year. One of the points that you made, Councilmember Hernandez, and you made is can there be further revenue realized? And not just on paper, not just because we're going to project a higher revenue. We can certainly make some of the paper analysis seem like we're going to have higher revenue. But when we actually have more of a realization of real revenue, that can be a trigger by which some of these packages can then be activated and approved down in the year. But that's just a suggestion for when we come back, either at the next council meeting or if you so desire to have a special meeting just on the budget. If not, we will dedicate all of the study session, two hours of the second week in June, of second meeting in June, just for the budget.
Yeah, I think that would be our recommendation. What does council think? Bring it back to the next study session?
Yeah, I concur with that, Mayor Protemp.
Yes, I'm in agreement.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and bring this back to the next council meeting study session so that we can go ahead and address this with more time.
Mayor Protemp can also just add, just as you clarified earlier, is can we just make sure that the departments provide just a quick cover page for each of the positions that they're looking as to why they, you know, why they're requesting them?
Yes, absolutely. That would be good if we can have that ready. That way, we kind of don't waste a lot of time asking a lot of questions. We can just kind of get to the point and then move forward from there.
May I mention something?
Sure.
The personnel requests, I already include all the justification from each department's request and emailed it to the city council. I also provided the hard copy right now. And it has been emailed to you. And please feel free to send your question through email to each department head or to myself and to the CEO. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you, Rose. Does any of my colleagues have any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, so seeing that there's none, there is no closed session items this week, so I will make a motion to adjourn the special meeting. Can I get a second?
Okay.
So we'll see you all in regular meeting.